Bienvenidos a esta sesión especial del diálogo de Borlaug, enfocada en el Summit de Food Systems Summit de la ONU. El nombre de esta sesión es "La Ruta al Summit de Food Systems 2021", y tenemos un panel enorme reunido para hablar sobre cómo esta ruta y esta sesión pueden proporcionar una oportunidad para avanzar en la seguridad de la alimentación y la agricultura, tanto localmente como globalmente. Esta sesión va a invitar líderes y partes interesadas de todos los tipos a discutir el camino hacia el summit y la visión necesaria y la acción para la transformación de los sistemas alimentarios. Vamos a empezar con un video especial lanzado hoy por el equipo del Summit de Food Systems de la ONU.
La comida es más que solo lo que comemos. Las formas en las que producimos, procesamos y consumimos alimentos toca cada aspecto de la vida en este planeta. Es la fundación de nuestras culturas, nuestras economías y nuestra relación con el mundo natural, y tiene el poder de nos unirnos como familias, comunidades y naciones.
Familias y niños están a punto de ser familiares.
Pero los sistemas alimentarios de hoy son frágiles y desiguales. Cuando fallan, hay efectos repentinos en todo el mundo, y la pandemia ha afectado a los más vulnerables entre nosotros. Pero sabemos lo que tenemos que hacer para volver a la pista. Tenemos una oportunidad de volver stronger que nunca. Transformar nuestros sistemas alimentarios es posible y necesario, y podemos establecer un curso para hacer cambios reales para el beneficio de todas las personas al unir a todos los jugadores clave de todo el mundo y dar voz a los ciudadanos de cada país. Porque un sistema alimentario fuerte significa...
No importa su raza, no importa su clase, no importa dónde vive.
Mujeres y hombres tienen igual de oportunidades para producir y acceder a alimentos nutritivos.
...que promueve la salud humana en cada paso.
...sin degradar los recursos de la tierra y el agua.
...significa una agricultura familiar.
...provee a nosotros, a la comunidad, con estabilidad.
...todo el año, cada mes, cada día de la semana.
...incluso durante una pandemia.
Todos estamos conectados y todos tenemos nuestra responsabilidad de actuar. Deben ser audaces, deben pensar y actuar de manera diferente. Transformar nuestros sistemas alimentarios es la acción más poderosa que podemos tomar para resolver nuestros mayores problemas, porque juntos...
Podemos construir un mundo resiliente.
...un mundo resiliente.
...donde nadie se deja atrás.
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 ¡参加今天我们！
Qué video excelente e inspirador para empezar esta conversación. Estamos honrados de recibir al Dr. Agnes Kalabata para empezar. Agnes, bienvenida.
Gracias.
Ella es secretaria... Lo siento, iba a decir que eres nuestro envío especial, por supuesto, del secretario general de la ONU para el Summit de Food Systems de la ONU 2021. También es presidente de la Alianza por la Revolución Verde en África. Bienvenida, Agnes.
Gracias, gracias por esos comentarios de bienvenida, Barbara. Y muchas gracias por asistir al Summit de Food Systems al mismo tiempo con el Premio Mundial de Alimentación. Realmente queremos estar asociados con el Premio Mundial de Alimentación y estamos extremadamente emocionados de ser parte de esta conversación. También quiero agradecer al panel, muchos de los cuales ya son parte de la conversación que está sucediendo en los procesos del Summit de Food Systems, y realmente quiero apreciar que has encontrado el tiempo para estar con nosotros hoy. Tengo una presentación que da una visión general, así que si puede ser cargada, entonces te llevaré rápidamente y haré eso como ancla de nuestra discusión esta noche. ¿Tenemos eso?
Creo que sí. Creo que todos deberían ver...
Así que...
...tu powerpoint.
Está en una pantalla llamada Tech Host.
Genial.
Bien. ¿Estoy perdiendo algo? Solo un segundo. Oh, lo veo ahora. Bueno, muy bien. Entonces vamos a la siguiente slide y empecemos. Bueno, entonces el Summit de Food Systems. El Summit de Food Systems está siendo lanzado hoy. Los diálogos del Summit de Food Systems están siendo lanzados hoy. Pero como sabrás, esta es una conversación que realmente comenzó el año pasado cuando el secretario general lanzó... Habiendo escuchado a los presidentes, habiendo escuchado a los ministros que venían del HLPE, todos se preocuparon que estábamos atrás en los SDGs y pidieron una década de acción. Así que el secretario general pensó que era sólo ajustable que si estábamos atrás en los SDGs, lanzemos la década de acción y en esa década de acción pensemos realmente sobre el tipo de acciones que tendríamos que traer para poder llegar a los SDGs. Pero también quería asegurarse de que entendemos que tenemos que hacer eso dentro del contexto de nuestro sistema alimentario. Por un número de razones, nuestros sistemas alimentarios están siendo desafiados, pero también nuestros sistemas alimentarios ofrecen una oportunidad para realmente poder superar algunos de los problemas que estamos viendo y reconstruir mejor después de COVID. Así que esperamos que puedas usar el Summit de Food Systems para lanzar nuevas acciones, innovaciones, estrategias que nos ayuden a lograr el progreso contra los SDGs. Siguiente slide, por favor. Así que decidimos que nos centraremos en los siguientes cinco áreas como objetivos del summit, y esperamos que estas áreas captiven las cosas que todos se preocupan por, y estas áreas se enfocan muy, muy importante, al menos desde mi parte del mundo, el tema de acceso a la comida, el tema del hambre, pero también el tema de la nutrición, reconociendo completamente que todavía tenemos enormes desafíos alrededor del hambre y la nutrición. El tema de la consumo... Hoy por la mañana estaba atendiendo el Foro de Alimentos Consumidores y discutiendo cosas que tienen que ver con el desperdicio y gestión del desperdicio y cómo reducir el desperdicio. Así que la gente ya tiene ideas de lo que debe hacerse. Necesitamos unirlo en este foro. Luego la idea de producción positiva de la naturaleza, reconociendo completamente que parte del trabajo que estamos haciendo desde un punto de vista de producción alimentaria contribuye al cambio climático y tenemos la oportunidad de pensar en nuevas formas de reducir el cambio climático. Después avanzando en las viviendas y la distribución de valor, reconociendo completamente que tenemos desafíos de empleo, tenemos desafíos de inequidad en los ingresos, y estas son las cosas que necesitamos discutir y pensar en la mejor forma de crear un mundo mejor para la mayoría de nosotros. Luego el tema de la construcción de resiliencia, y probablemente no haya un mejor momento en el mundo que ahora para hablar de vulnerabilidades, choques y construir capacidad para lidiar con los choques. También reconocemos que esto formará, por cierto, estos formarán los tránsitos y serán la base de los tránsitos que el Comité de Asesoramiento ha acordado. Pero también hay otras cuestiones como finanzas, política y innovación, conocimiento indígena, como ves aquí todo incluido, el empleo de mujeres y jóvenes y grupos marginados, realmente asegurarnos de que las cosas que hablamos, las cosas que hacemos, las acciones que tomamos en consideración también entienden y también consideran el hecho de que estas son áreas críticas que siempre debemos volver a tratar cuando diseñamos programas. Siguiente slide. Siguiente, bueno. Así que el propósito del summit es asegurarnos de que lo que hagamos, elevamos la conversación y el discurso público alrededor de los sistemas alimentarios, y el hecho de que lograr los SDGs sin pensar en el contexto en el que los logramos no va a funcionar más para nosotros mientras avanzamos. Pensar en acciones ambiciosas fuera del contexto de los sistemas alimentarios no va a funcionar más para nosotros. Así que realmente elevando la ambición alrededor de cómo nos involucramos en los sistemas alimentarios, pero también pensando en la calidad y el tipo de acciones que necesitamos traer para poder volver a la pista de los SDGs. Esperamos que podamos, en cada nivel nacional, podamos llegar a un conjunto de acciones que constituirán nuestra transición a los sistemas alimentarios mejor en un contexto muy local en estos países, mejor en los desafíos y las oportunidades que cada país ofrece. Y luego, por supuesto, esperamos que podamos llegar a un mecanismo de seguimiento donde siempre podemos volver y decir qué progreso hemos hecho. Dado que en diez años no tenemos mucho tiempo y probablemente solo asegurarnos de que cada año que pasa el summit tengamos un mecanismo de regresar y preguntarnos si estamos logrando el progreso que queremos ver sería realmente bueno. Siguiente slide. Este esfuerzo está construyendo un número de otros esfuerzos que ya están underway, estamos construyendo con el trabajo del CFS, un instrumento fabuloso que ya se ha puesto en marcha que está realmente diseñando y continuará revisando algunos de los principios que guiarán nuestros sistemas alimentarios, pero también un número de otros instrumentos que están ahí, un número de otros procesos que están underway. El Summit de Food Systems estará construyendo con ellos. Estamos diseñando el Summit de Food Systems para ser lo que llamamos el Summit de la Puesa porque eso es lo que el secretario general ha pedido. Y para mí, un Summit de la Puesa significa esto. Significa que tomamos esta conversación a todos los hogares, a todos los individuos, porque cada persona toma la decisión de comer tres veces al día, y esas decisiones afectan nuestros sistemas alimentarios. Así que si no los llevamos a la gente para que hagan la decisión de parar el desperdicio, si no los llevamos a la gente para que hagan la decisión de reducir todas las cosas que están afectando nuestros sistemas alimentarios, entonces realmente no llegaremos a donde queremos estar. Así que tenemos un programa muy ambicioso adelante. Y luego la otra ambición es alrededor del tipo de soluciones que queremos ver. Queremos ver soluciones que puedan escalar, que puedan llegar a, ya sabes, grandes números de personas, que pueden moverse de país a país, que pueden llegar a muchas personas al mismo tiempo para que podamos empezar a ver el cambio que queremos ver. Así que es por eso que realmente hablamos de que este summit no sea sólo un Summit de la Puesa. Tiene que ser un Summit de la Puesa, pero también tiene que ser un Summit de Soluciones. Reconociendo completamente que ya tenemos mucho lugar de negociación. No estamos buscando negociar nada. Solo estamos buscando acción para lograr cosas que ya hemos negociado. Siguiente slide. Así que diseñamos los instrumentos que nos ayudarán a lograr. Tenemos, como verás aquí, tenemos lo que llamamos evidencia y conocimiento. Aquí tengo una combinación de líneas de trabajo y instrumentos de entrega. Líneas de trabajo es lo que hacemos en el Secretario. Así que lo que ves en azul, muchos de eso es realmente como llamamos las cosas en el Secretario. Lo que ves en rojo, por ejemplo, evidencia y herramientas de clase mundial. Esta es la obra del grupo científico, con el que Luisa estaré hablando. Luego tenemos el trabajo de tránsitos, ideas cambiadas de juego, las cosas que una vez que realmente descubrimos qué son estas cosas podemos realmente mover nuestras acciones hacia adelante. Luego tenemos los diálogos, de los que David podría hablar o hablaremos. Y estos diálogos son como tomamos la conversación a la gente a nivel nacional, en diferentes plataformas, pero queríamos asegurarnos de que las personas diferentes estén involucradas al mismo tiempo. Luego, por supuesto, tenemos comunicaciones, como has visto hoy, solo siendo capaz de tomar esta conversación solo al llegar a tantas personas al mismo tiempo. Y esperamos que esto se traduzca en abrir la visión y las acciones del summit y acelerar el progreso en el pre- summit y el summit, que el secretario general anunció el otro día. El pre- summit va a pasar en verano en Roma y el summit va a pasar en Nueva York junto con la Asamblea General de la ONU. Siguiente slide. Así que hablé sobre el sentido del summit. El summit quiere anclarse mucho, su trabajo mucho, y cómo vamos hacia adelante mucho en el sentido de que no muchos de ustedes se preocupan por ello, y solo queremos asegurarnos de que entendemos que donde vamos está impulsado por la evidencia de lo posible. De nuevo, estamos en una situación en la que realmente necesitamos ir hacia algún lugar y tienes que estar bastante seguro de que donde estamos moviéndose realmente está tratando de salvarnos como una gente, pero también tratando de salvar nuestro mundo, que es un poco estresante. ¿Cuál es la razón por la que tenemos el Summit de Food Systems en primer lugar? Siguiente slide, y debería terminar pronto. Estos tránsitos no van a estar discutiendo mucho qué tránsitos hacen. Han sido lanzados como parte de los diálogos también. Te escucharás más sobre ellos. Siguiente slide. El diálogo de los sistemas alimentarios. Esta es una área que me excita, pero dejaré que David hable. Tiene tres partes. El diálogo de nivel nacional, tiene los diálogos globales que se construyen sobre diálogos existentes, pero también tiene los diálogos independientes para que nadie se sienta atrás. Si quieres involucrarte, tienes un mecanismo de involucramiento a través de diálogos independientes. Siguiente slide. Luego tenemos a los campeones, a los campeones del summit. Estas son las personas que nos están ayudando a llevar el summit a las personas que no conocemos. Sabes, hay redes allá afuera, las personas que están haciendo todo tipo de cosas, y para poder llegar a ellos realmente necesitamos campeones. Y hemos diseñado esto como una red de campeones en lugar de tener cientos de campeones para este summit. Queremos cientos y cientos de campeones. El modo de manejar eso es si cada campeón maneja su propia red y luego pueden trabajar con el secretario desde esa perspectiva. Así que esperamos que esto le dará a la gente la oportunidad de educarse sobre el summit. Esto le dará a la gente la oportunidad de traer a otras personas, esto le dará la oportunidad de compartir la información que viene del summit. Siguiente slide, espero que sea la última slide. Esto ya he hablado sobre, hoy no hablé sobre el Task Force. Las diferentes instituciones en la ONU se unieron para el Task Force para realmente ayudarnos a poder trabajar con ellos y hacerlo saber. Siguiente slide. Vamos a la siguiente slide en el interés del tiempo. Esta es mi última slide, es la slide del día de la comida. Es la slide donde recibimos todo lo que estamos haciendo esta semana. Recibimos celebrar a Barbara, tu laureada doctor Ratanda. Estamos extremadamente orgullosos de que ha ganado el Premio Mundial de Alimentación este año. Recibimos celebrar un programa de comida mundial y ganar el Premio Nobel. Pero también recibimos celebrar el día de la comida mundial donde estamos lanzando todos estos diálogos, todos estos instrumentos ahora en marcha juntos, y estamos invitándote a la conversación y los diálogos. Así que Barbara, empecemos. A ti ahora.
Gracias, Agnes. Eso es realmente un conjunto rico de slides, mucho profundidad en ellos. Así que no puedo ver el chat, pero sé que está loco con "¿podemos obtener copias de esas slides?" Y así, con tu permiso, si podemos, los publicaremos en Hoover como parte de esta sesión después. Muchas gracias, Agnes. Vamos a pasar ahora. Bueno, primero, bienvenimos a todos al escenario. Úneteos si puedes, eleva a todos. Vamos a hablar con cada individuo que nos acompaña hoy. Estás solo unos minutos de ellos, y luego vamos a abrir para discusión entre todos. Así que tenemos un panel maravilloso y diverso reunido aquí. Agradezco a todos ustedes que vienen. Vamos a empezar contigo, David. David Nabarro es el director estratégico para 4SD, y también nos está guiando en el desarrollo, lanzando los diálogos de los sistemas alimentarios hoy, creo. David.
Muchas gracias. Hola a todos. El tiempo es corto y me gustaría describir la forma en la que, como dijo el Dr. Kalabata, vamos a ayudar a asegurar que hay diálogo en todas partes en relación con los temas de este summit. La responsabilidad particular que tengo es relacionada con la participación de los gobiernos y la gente de los diferentes estados miembros de las Naciones Unidas en la preparación del summit a través de diálogo. La solicitud que ha venido del envío especial y del secretario general es que deberíamos mirar el futuro de los sistemas alimentarios desde una perspectiva muy amplia, en línea con todos los 17 objetivos de desarrollo sostenible. También hay una solicitud de involucrar a múltiples partes interesadas en los sistemas alimentarios en la exploración, dejando a nadie atrás. Eso significa que a nivel nacional habrá un esfuerzo para animar el trabajo conjunto en un camino nacional hacia los sistemas alimentarios sostenibles hasta 2030. Será una actividad local, específica al país. Será inclusivo, se construirá sobre el trabajo pasado en el país. Puede ser hecho virtualmente o cara a cara debido a COVID y contribuirá al summit, pero también es una actividad que puede continuar después del summit hasta 2030 y más allá. En los países, será dirigido por los gobiernos nacionales. Se solicitará en breve por el secretario general para nombrar un convenero nacional de diálogo de sistemas alimentarios que será responsable de establecer el programa de trabajo para producir el camino nacional y para iniciar diálogos de sistemas alimentarios. Se apoyará por los coordinadores residentes de la ONU, por oficiales de las agencias de la ONU, por socios y también por campeones del summit de alimentos en los países donde la ONU esté activa, eso es lo que quiero decir. Por supuesto, habrá una solicitud para cada país para pasar por este proceso. Habrá involucramiento de científicos nacionales, así como otros expertos nacionales, todos en línea con los tránsitos que has oído describir. Los diálogos nacionales estarán en tres etapas. La etapa de iniciación es de noviembre a diciembre este año. La etapa de exploración en cada país es de enero a marzo del año próximo. Y la exploración se realizará en múltiples ubicaciones dentro del país a través de numerosos diálogos, culminando en un momento de cosecha en marzo de 2021. Y luego en abril y mayo de 2021, los resultados de la iniciación, exploración y cosecha se consolidarán en el camino nacional, así como en los compromisos para el summit en el tiempo para el pre- summit, que se debe llevar a cabo en junio o julio. Ahora, para que estas actividades de país reflejen realmente las bases científicas del summit, recibirán inputs antes de cada etapa del diálogo. Así que habrá un input entrando en noviembre, habrá un input entrando en enero y habrá un input entrando en abril. Y estos inputs vendrán del grupo científico, vendrán de los cinco tránsitos, vendrán de los diversos lideres que están siendo examinados, incluyendo financiación, innovación, mujeres y juventud. Y esos inputs informarán los diálogos nacionales, pero también los outputs de los diálogos nacionales volverán a los tránsitos y lideres del grupo científico. Para facilitar todo esto, existe un sitio web de diálogos que ha sido lanzado hoy, en el que la gente registrará. Estas oscilaciones que tenemos entre los grupos científicos y los tránsitos y los diálogos de países se manejará cuidadosamente. Habrá trabajo sintético para unir los resultados de todos los diálogos usando varias técnicas modernas para asegurarnos de que la información se colatera bien y habrá un programa de aprendizaje y desarrollo de habilidades para los varios cientos de conveneros, curadores y facilitadores que serán necesarios. Al mismo tiempo, existe un programa de diálogos independientes que están disponibles para cualquier persona, donde quiera hacer. Pueden ser realizados separadamente de los gobiernos nacionales o del sistema internacional, y también habrá diálogos a nivel global. Invito a todos a unirse a nosotros. Esta es parte de esta enorme conversación que el Dr. Kalabata describió, y en particular, para saber más sobre el programa país a país a medida que evoluciona. Gracias, Barbara.
Muchas gracias, David. Qué programa ambicioso de trabajo para los próximos seis a nueve meses. Vamos a hablar más sobre todos esos elementos. Y solo piensa, este es solo uno de esos cuatro boxes verdes. Hay más para discutir. Ahora voy a cambiar a Louise Fresco, presidenta de la Universidad de Vangeneng en Investigación. Louise, tú eres vicepresidente del Comité Científico para el diálogo, para el summit, y así nos encantaría escuchar más de ti sobre cómo el Comité Científico va a trabajar y operar para avanzar en la transformación de los sistemas alimentarios.
Gracias, Barbara. Déjame empezar diciendo que estoy tremendamente contenta de poder participar. Ha sido un viaje maravilloso para el Premio Mundial de Alimentación. Lo noto muy bien como miembro de la Cámara de Asesorías, y también es un viaje maravilloso, como Agnes y David han explicado. De hecho, han hecho el trabajo tan bien que voy a agregar algunos comentarios más. Creo que lo más importante que hay que decir sobre la base científica para el summit es que en realidad esta vez, en la historia de todos los summits de alimentos que hemos tenido, summits de seguridad alimentaria en la historia de la ONU, es la primera vez que hay un organismo científico explícito. Ese es un paso realmente importante. Y en segundo lugar, que ese organismo se alinea con los tránsitos del summit, como Agnes ha explicado. Así que por primera vez podemos realmente definir cuál es el enfoque basado en la evidencia científica para alcanzar los objetivos de cada uno de estos tránsitos. Eso realmente hace que sea un summit diferente. Y así, justamente, Agnes dice que no es un summit de negociación porque hay muchas cosas que necesitamos hacer, pero ya los conocemos y es realmente un enfoque orientado a la acción. Y eso también es lo que tomaremos como enfoque para el Comité Científico. Ahora, aparte del trabajo de los tránsitos, creo que veremos lo que llamamos trofeos, porque, por supuesto, así es como funciona. La ciencia solo puede indicar un par de cosas, pero claro, siempre hay decisiones que son decisiones más políticas, y una decisión a veces significa efectos positivos sobre otras variables científicas. Para darte un ejemplo rápido, si dices que queremos que toda la producción alimentaria sea local, eso significa que estás excluyendo la importación y el comercio, y por lo tanto excluyendo también el potencial de los agricultores en otros países para realmente ganar ingresos. La otra cosa importante que quiero decir es que esto va a ser sobre trofeos, sobre cuestiones de intercambio también. Así que es algo como el comercio mismo, pero también el género y las asociaciones obviamente no están vinculadas a uno de los tránsitos, pero deberían ser intercambiantes. Así que estamos mirando un poco el enfoque de la matriz. Y creo que es importante darse cuenta de que el concepto, tanto del sistema alimentario como de la transformación, es complejo. No hay un sistema alimentario, no hay diez sistemas alimentarios, son decenas de miles de sistemas alimentarios. Todas las diferencias, las diferencias de declinación, si deseas. Y lo que necesitamos ver es qué son las cosas que realmente sabemos. Por ejemplo, sabemos que si tienes tierras pobres, como en la mayoría de África, entonces a largo plazo, la agricultura sin fertilización, en particular de las semillas alimentarias anuales, va a ser un desastre porque simplemente se agota la tierra. Esa es la categoría de lo que sabemos. También hay cosas que no sabemos que son complicadas. Por ejemplo, ¿cómo podemos lidiar mejor con ciertos pestos persistentes y enfermedades? ¿Podemos hacer eso a través de genética o a través de otros medios? Hay muchas cosas que no sabemos. Otro par de cosas, como países, como miembros de países, podemos acordar de discordar, o mejor dicho, ya estamos discordando, pero tal vez podemos acordar de encontrar un lugar común. Un buen ejemplo es, por supuesto, la precisión genética, Christopher Cass, el sujeto, por cierto, del Premio Nobel por química este año. Así que queremos ver qué son los elementos para la transformación, y eso necesita ser impulsado por evidencia. Ahora, también es importante, ese es mi último comentario, que la transformación no es una cosa. Es una evolución más a menudo que una revolución, pero hay una enorme cantidad que se puede aprender de las lecciones de otros países. Y creo que los diálogos que David va a involucrar también traerán esa evidencia. ¿Qué ya sabemos? ¿Qué se puede compartir? ¿Cómo podemos ayudar a la gente a ganar ese conocimiento y compartirlo en todo el mundo para que no los países o los agricultores o otros grupos necesiten reinventar la rueda? Así que es impulsado por la ciencia, pero la ciencia también sabe su lugar. En fin, muchas de estas decisiones son políticas y no solo científicas. Pero estamos trabajando con gran velocidad y gran energía, y es un proyecto fantástico también para el Comité Científico. Gracias, Barbara.
Gracias, Louise. Ahora vamos a ir a la embajadora Kip Tom. Kip Tom es la embajadora para la misión de la ONU hacia las agencias de la ONU en Roma. Kip, estás involucrado en esto desde el punto de vista de los estados miembros. Quiero decir, tenemos un sistema desarrollando aquí, un conjunto de análisis que se centra en el desarrollo de caminos nacionales de los más posibles países. Así que háblanos de la oportunidad para que los estados miembros realmente trabajen juntos para avanzar en los sistemas alimentarios a través de este proceso.
Bueno, gracias, Barbara. Bueno, si hay una cosa, mi tiempo como embajador permanente para las agencias de la ONU de alimentos y agricultura ha enseñado, es que hay muchas visiones competitivas para lo que el futuro de nuestros sistemas alimentarios globales deberían verse. Y honestamente, frecuentemente nos enganchamos en un debate para hacer nuestras voces oídas solo para asegurarnos de que todos los sistemas alimentarios son una opción. Pero el hecho es que no tenemos el lujo de debatir políticas más久. Los desafíos afrontados son reales y los riesgos son altos porque no estamos en el objetivo de lograr los SDGs hasta 2030. Y los estados miembros todos tienen el mismo mandato. Debemos descubrir cómo ayudar a alimentar a un mundo hambriento y también asegurarnos del futuro de nuestros recursos naturales más preciosos, la tierra, el agua, la tierra y trabajar dentro de nuestras fronteras planetarias. El Summit de Sistemas de Alimentación ofrece una increíble oportunidad para nosotros para subirnos encima de la baraja y trabajar juntos en soluciones innovadoras y actuales que son económicamente, ambientalmente y socialmente sostenibles. Así que para ser exitoso, el summit debería servir como forma para que las partes interesadas se involucren en conocimientos y soluciones prácticas. and practical solutions, and all tools for improving food systems must be considered. And we need to hear more from farmers and the private sector who can offer unique perspectives and new ideas. And we also must work to expand options and opportunities instead of limiting them. And we must rely on sound science to guide the pathway forward. So I'm confident that together, we can build a future with a balanced and agile, responsive, scalable food and agricultural ecosystem that's more efficient and sustainable food production and sustainably defined as social, economic, and environmental, and work within the planetary boundaries by reducing our carbon footprint with further improvements in environmental stewardship, and all be better livelihoods and more opportunities for men, women, and youth. But the time to act is now. We already have so many of the tools needed to transform farms and food systems, and all may transform the lives of millions. We just need the will and the vision to use them, and I look forward to our conversations.
Thank you, Kip. Now, we're going to take it down to the ground, to on-the-ground activity that's going on, where I think our next speaker, Chef Jose Andres, is dealing with food systems issues on a daily basis. He's founder of the World Central Kitchen. Welcome, Jose. Talk to us a little bit about your extensive work in emergency food response and advocacy for equity, and what's going on at the local and regional levels in the food systems transformation needs? Welcome, Jose.
Thank you, Barbara, and thank you very much for inviting people like me that we are at the end of all these amazing ideas on how we should be feeding the planet. And I love that it's on the top of the leadership in this moment, so many women are leading the way. Because at the end of the day, and I'm telling you I'm a cook, if we talk about who is feeding the planet, let me tell you, those are women. So I know we talk a lot about food waste. The conversation in every conference that go around the world is about food waste. I believe that we must all start talking more about what is really important, about the people, about not wasting the lives of people through food waste. We need to change and rotate the way we are approaching this. I do believe that conferences like the World Food Prize, which is amazing, we need to be bringing those conferences sometimes to the places that we know people need our help, our aid, and we must listen to them in the places that the battle against fighting hunger is happening as we speak. I know it's been a lot of talk about big farming versus small farming. I don't think they are at war. I think we all recognize that we need to feed the big planet, and we need big farms, but cannot be at the expense of medium and smaller farmers in America around the world doing poorly. Big countries, the subsidies, sometimes they are upside down, where some get the vast majority of the funding versus the small farmers almost getting nothing. I do believe that we need to increase the diversity on the crops we are harvesting. If we put all our guns in the few big six grains, I'm very worried that one day, the same way we saw this pandemic happening and we didn't see it coming, what if we have a big pest that all of a sudden eradicates the big six grains? Diversity on the crops, diversity on the vegetables and fruits that we use around the world to feed mankind is a national security for every single country. And I would say that we need to be bold. I love that we are bringing the science. I know the World Food Prize has been big on the science. We need to start thinking out of the box. Should we be harvesting the ocean in a much more productive way? There are grains in the ocean that tribes over centuries, they've been feeding their families. If we can produce grains with seawater, we can totally change the future of hunger in the world. So we must invest in the future, vertical farming, any new way that we can produce more without taxing our environment. Obviously, I've been after hurricanes, and I see what happens when we produce food and we don't think about the consequences. In North Carolina, after the last big hurricane was manure all around the state of North Carolina, we must do better investing in how to utilize that manure to create fertilizer, to create methane that can be energy to move the farms forward. This is, to me, very important. And after emergencies, Barbara, we need to start thinking the way we provide aid to the people. Very often, the good of our heart, the rich countries come with food that we feed the people in need in those countries. Sometimes, I see it once and over again, because we bring so much food from the outside, we leave the local farming industry poorer than before we arrived. We must do better in emergencies to enrich those farming systems, to enrich those people. So when we leave those communities after an emergency, especially in the poor countries of the world, we'll do better. And last, that to me is very important, we need, in the process of talking about food, to talk about something like is one of the hidden problems that we have on this earth. Almost 3 billion people are feeding their families with charcoal. Forests are being cut. Junglels, when they are too poor to buy charcoal, are sent to the forest to pick up wood. Many issues happen with charcoal cooking. We must do better in providing systems to the people to be able to cook that food. The only way we will end hunger and poverty is when those almost 3 billion people have the same opportunity of clean cooking to feed their families. Clean cooking, in many ways, has many of the hidden solutions that we are all looking for. So I want to add with the words of Briate Sabran, the French philosopher, that in 1826, he said, "Tell me what you eat, and I'll tell you who you are." But he has a more important phrase. He said, "The future of the nations will depend in how they feed themselves." I'm very thrilled that I'm here with all of you precisely talking about how we will feed every nation, every person on the world. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jose, for those charges, for covering so many important areas that you clearly spend a tremendous amount of time thinking about. We're going to shift now, and Anna, for three minutes, I'll offer you just a quick opportunity for remarks from your own perspective around translating the policy direction of food systems to increase impact on the ground. Tanager does so much on the ground. So Anna Billick is President of Tanager International.
Thank you, Barbara, for inviting me to participate in today's roundtable. And thank you, Agnes, also, for sharing your vision for the Food Systems Summit. Tanager co-creates economic and social opportunities in Africa, Asia, and Latin America with partners like the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, Walmart Foundation, and leading companies like Mars Wrigley. Our work focuses on increasing the productivity and profitability of smallholder farming communities, with women's empowerment and improved nutrition as key outcomes. COVID-19 has highlighted how globally connected we really are. It has shown us that while the solutions for global problems need to be framed at a macro level, they are actually achieved by the choices and actions each of us makes every day at the micro level in our own homes and communities. So too with food systems. How food system solutions are implemented at the local level in people's homes and communities determines how successful we will have been when we look back to the Food Systems Summit 10 years from now. From the perspective of Tanager's work, solutions should be holistic, equitable, and place-based. We know that smallholder farmers grow a variety of subsistence and cash crops to meet their dietary and income needs, yet supply chain investments often focus on just one crop. To build resilient food systems in farming communities, we should consider a whole farm approach that diversifies income generating, income smoothing opportunities, and increases access to nutritious food. For example, Tanager is expanding our partnerships in the min-growing regions of India to include premium potato buyers so that smallholder farmers have markets for their full crop rotation. We know that women play a vital role in farming households' income and nutrition, yet women are often marginalized from market systems and bear the greatest portion of food insecurity. To advance equitable livelihoods and value distribution, we must reduce systemic gaps in women's ability to access, control, and benefit from resources, and increase women's capabilities to influence decision-making in their households and communities. We know that no two food environments are the same. A coastal community is going to have access to different protein sources than a landlocked one. To ensure access to safe and nutritious food for all, we need solutions based on an understanding of the local food environment. I would love to see global commitments come out of the Food Systems Summit that create the framework for local solutions that meet the needs of whole families, whole farms, and whole communities. Back to you, Barbara.
Thank you, Anna. Next, we get Neil Gutterston. Dr. Neil Gutterston is Senior Vice President and CTO, the Chief Technology Officer for Corteva Agroscience. Welcome, Neil.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you for having me here for part of this important and wonderful conversation, and always great to be part of the World Food Prize, whether it's in Des Moines or out here in California virtually. Let me start with a couple of remarks about Corteva, starting with our purpose as a company. We are fundamentally focused on delivering value to farmers. But that's more than that. We also think about what the farmer has to deliver for the consumer, the food system that they have to support, and enabling the farmer to deliver that in a better and better way is part of our purpose as well. And fundamentally, beyond that, we also know that the farmer is critical to delivering environmental benefits, mitigating the agricultural impacts on the environment as well. And so our purpose is broad. It's serving farmers, it's serving consumers, and it's serving the environment. Now, to do that well, we know that we need to have improved food systems around the world. And so that's key to our purpose and why I'm really excited that I can be here today with this wonderful panel. You've heard a lot about diversity, and we also believe in the diversity of food systems and the importance of offering choice to the very diverse customers that we have around the world. And we serve over 16 million smallholder farmers in Africa today. We serve large farmers, family farms in Iowa and elsewhere in the world. And so we must be cognizant of the crops, the cropping systems, and the diversity of tools that those farmers need. And we do deliver a diversity of choices for those farmers. So with that in mind, the diversity of cropping systems, the diversity of food and crops, let me just step back and really maybe address the question a little bit more specifically. What can we do as a private company and other private companies to help advocate for improved food systems as we approach this important summit next year? So first of all, part of this advocating for the importance of choice, and I think Kip Tom mentioned earlier, that it's not about debates anymore about which food systems. There are many, many, many different food systems. We need to find ways to deliver the right food system in the right region at the right time. And so we're committed to that. We advocate for that consistently around the world, for choice, whether that's organic farming, small farming, large farming, precision agriculture, various tools of agriculture. It's also critical that we advocate, and we do this consistently, for the importance of innovation. We're a science-based company, and innovation is the blood of what we do. We know that the improved food systems will not be possible without innovation, whatever that food system is. And modern tools enable us to deliver more sustainable production on whether it's an ecological system or an intensified agricultural system that also delivers sustainable benefits. And so advocating for innovation is a critical part of what we will do in this dialogue. And importantly, that requires collaboration. And we collaborate around the world. We collaborate with the CG system. We collaborate in many ways that enable better foods and technology to be brought to bear on the lives of smallholder farmers around the world. And examples there include the work that we've done using CRISPR, which is relevant, as Louise said today, particularly this week, to improve SORGA to resist FRAGA for major problem in major parts of Africa. We're working with CRISPR to edit maize to deliver improved MLN-resistant varieties with devastating problem around Africa as well. And a range of other tools for cropping systems and digital insights for farmers that are important on small scale and large scale as well. So we'll advocate for that because we know that if there isn't broad access to those innovations, farmers will lose, consumers will lose, and the environment will lose. Ultimately, just to end, it's the farmer that's at the center of what we do, delivering value to that farmer, improving their lives, and through them, improving the food systems that are so critical to livelihoods of farmers around the world. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you so much. We have two more people we're going to welcome into this conversation, and then we're going to have some time, I hope, for some discussion. So Pam Johnson joins us now as a farmer on the ground. Welcome, Pam. You're farming Iowa corn and from Mezal here in Iowa. Tell us a little bit more about what farmers need and how they can help amplify these messages that you're hearing need to be taken forward to advance food systems and the summit.
Thank you, Barbara, and really glad to be part of the discussion. So in answer to your question, I would say that we can create the spaces for farmers from around the world to talk about their lived experiences on their farms, encourage them to be part of the journey to food security, invite them to the party, and give them a voice. And let this panel at the World Food Prize be a template for what can happen when people from all walks of life gather together to work on the complex challenges that face us all. Farmers want to be at the table, to have a voice, to listen and to learn from others, and we want to be part of the solution. Agriculture is a big tent with farmers from across the globe growing many different crops and raising livestock, poultry, fish. Farmers are conventional, organic, small, medium, large. It doesn't matter. The world needs all of us. We have been issued the grand challenge. We must produce more food in the next four decades than we have in the last 8,000 years of agriculture combined. So farmers need access to the best tools and the technologies for the problems we face. One size does not fit all. Farmers need a voice and a choice to address specific challenges, and some of those might be how to control the fall army worm, African swine fever, or finding new ways to increase soil organic matter, improve soil health, finding the best seeds tailored to our particular soil type and climate, and making the best use of water and nutrients. We all want the opportunity to be successful at food production, wherever we live, and with the diversity of crops that we grow. Farmers strive for continual improvement with best management practices. However, we always need more knowledge, more research, and innovation, the science brought from the lab to our fields. We need shared ideas from diverse sources, traditional land-grant institutions, universities, and private industry. Then we need the infrastructure and the mechanisms to share these new ideas with the people that can use them, utilizing research farms, extension, farmer-to-farmer learning sessions, and with technologies for information that can be accessed by cell phones and web-based resources. As Norman Borlaug said, "Take it to the farmer." And we need to take it to the people, and we're all ready to step up to the plate. And I think, as King Abdullah challenged us this morning, we need to look beyond the old ways of doing things, and we need to look to the future with the new eyes. And farmers take up that challenge, and we can be bold. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you so much. Now, we're going to turn to Priscilla Tren. Priscilla is an undergraduate student from the University of Minnesota. She's our Global Youth Institute representative. We're so glad to welcome you to the stage. Priscilla, talk to us about the next generation of food system experts, which you're bringing the voice of. What are some of those elements that you think are most needed to advance food systems?
Thank you, President Simpson. Like everyone else, I am extremely grateful to be here. Once again, I'm Priscilla Jin. I was a 2018 Global Youth Institute delegate, the year Dr. Nabaro and Dr. Haddad were announced laureates, actually, a 2019 Borlaug Iran International intern at Erie in the Philippines, and I'm now serving as a group leader, mentoring an amazing group of nine high school students at this year's Global Youth Institute program. This year, 214 high school students and 55 college students from across 11 countries have gathered to fight hunger. They were chosen from over 10,000 youth leaders across 17 countries, participated in youth programs in their schools and communities. Over the past week, as a group leader, I have witnessed so much resilience amongst my peers. This is resilience that we wish to see in our food systems. And the question on everyone's mind is how? How can we achieve a better food system when the youth are disillusioned with green growth and big institutions? When the youth are forced to grapple with new colonialism while trying to amplify suppressed indigenous knowledge? When the youth are left disappointed by industrial agriculture's promises and ecological destruction? When 10% to 20% of youth are diagnosed with mental health afflictions? How will we collectively combat this spectrum of nihilism, polarizing anger, and fear? I don't have all the answers. Nobody does. But it's clear that youth voices must be engaged beyond symbolic gesture. The World Food Prize Foundation and its partners recognize this. And to this end, I am pleased and honored to announce a new initiative being launched this year in preparation for the UN's Food Systems Summit. During this year's Global Institute, students' research and language will be gathered and compiled into a white paper. The white paper will then be submitted to the UN as a conduit representing youth voices, no way for the youth to directly engage in shaping global food systems. I am excited to see how this develops and kind of emphasize how promising it is to see the World Food Prize Foundation's commitment to creating an intersectional, multi-generational path towards a more resilient food system. I am proud to be a youth life in these times and even more proud of all the students and supporters gathered here to fight hunger. In closing, I would like to say this: Keep your visions and heads high, and your Zoom bandwidth higher. Thank you.
Yes, Zoom bandwidth. Thank you so much, Priscilla. It's so inspiring to hear your voice and to know you're representing the couple of hundred Youth Institute members here, but the 10,000 that have participated this year in our youth programs. So, and we thank the UN Food Systems Summit for this commitment to integrate these voices. So now we're going to open up for discussion. We probably have about 15 minutes, and we're going to give a chance for folks to weigh in on some of what you've heard from each other or other issues that you think need to be brought forward. So I will just take a raise of hands, whoever would like to get us started. Neil?
Thanks, Barbara. You know, this question actually is for Louise, and you made the comment about this is the first time there is an explicit scientific body in an effort like this. And I'm wondering if you can offer a thought, given the battering sometimes science takes around the world, and why this has come to pass?
Thank you, Neil. That's certainly a very pertinent question. Science will never be without its controversies because it's always in evolution, and we see this very clearly with what's now happening on COVID-19. However, we have one experience outside the food area which I think can inspire us in the longer term, and that is what has happened to the Climate Convention and the IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, which underpinned many, many conferences on climate. Now, of course, there too, there were many controversies, but slowly and gradually, what emerged was a very solid body of science on what we know, also indications of what we don't know, as I said, and also indications of where there is controversy. Now, what is extremely important for scientists is not to sit on the chairs of political scientists or political, as you'll say, political scientists, politicians. Science cannot take decisions on what is the best policy option, but it can indicate the consequences. It can indicate what that really action is needed. And I think the experience of the climate community, however difficult it was, and I was engaged as of the first IPCC report as a reviewer, it still, it grows. Now, the difference is perhaps that we know more about food, and there is more of a sense of urgency today. When the climate community started, that sense of urgency wasn't felt. So I think what is really important is that we don't try, in this one year that we have before the summit, but I'm also looking definitely at Agnes to give her indications there, that we don't try to solve everything because that's not going to be possible. But there are, in my view, some real priorities, issues that we know about, of engaging again the dialogues to see where we already can learn the lessons, transmit the lessons, and this really involves partners. That word hasn't been used a lot yet, but I would say, with your permission, Barbara, this whole thing hinges very much also on partnerships between farmers, big and small, consumers, big and small, in all countries, but also between the public and the private sectors. This is really something that needs to be done. And yes, opinions, Neil, on science will differ, and it will still evolve, but I'm also quite confident that there is a body of science there that we can bring together immediately for the public good and for food for all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Others? Comments, questions that you have? Pam?
So, you know, as you see even on this panel, we can disagree, but I think it's important to realize if we're going to move into the future, to recognize that we agree to disagree, but we all have the same goal in mind, and that is zero hunger and to make the world a better place. And there is a spot for all kinds of agriculture and all kinds of viewpoints. And I think we all need to be hopeful that things will get better and that we will get bold, but we all have to be moving toward the same goal and the same price in true north.
And you know, Pam, this is something that we've heard all week long, that the commitment is there, and from diverse perspectives on all the issues that we've discussed, people want to move forward and advance things in a collaborative fashion for impact. That's, the time is now, and it rises above all of the differences to some degree. We want to hear from others of you. Does anybody else have something they want to offer? Anna? And then Jose, I think.
First of all, I want to congratulate Priscilla and thank you for your comments. I think reminding us of the young folks, I have a teenager at home, and their perspective on food security is really important, so thank you. I also want to pull on a thread that I think was pretty common around diversifying food sources, diversifying incomes, diversifying crops. For us to be able to do that, we need to bring together what I would call uncommon partnerships. We often see partnerships along a particular crop or supply chain when we might need to start thinking about partnerships across different supply chains that are more place-based. And I think that way we can really bring the full impact of a strong food environment to the local communities around the world.
Thank you. Okay, we're getting a good lineup going now. We're going to go next to Jose and then David.
Thank you very much. Very quickly, what I would like to bring to the panel is that I do believe that we have enough know-how in how to produce food to feed an ever-growing planet. The science is there. We must always do more to train especially smaller farmers in rural, poor areas. But I will say that food production, we can accomplish the simple mission of feeding humanity by the year 2050. But I think we must put more emphasis on preservation of the foods, the goodness of the earth. Much of food that is wasted goes waste in the entire chain, and we must put more thought on the distribution. Even when you go to an emergency and you see that a lot of people may be hungry in remote areas, the issue is not lack of food. The issue is distribution to those people that need our help. When you bring this at the world scale, it's exactly the same. We must do more to bring preservation techniques, especially in poorer areas, so no crop, no food goes wasted, and we must do more to help those people producing, to have the right distribution from the places in the world that produce more to places that for now don't have enough. Preservation and distribution should be two words that we should be bringing to the conversation in the years to come.
And of course, you're devoted to doing that from restaurants to populations in urban areas, and it's just been tremendous to see the results. So thank you for that. David, and then Kip, I think you have also a comment. David?
Yeah, just to say, I was so pleased to hear Pam saying very clearly that we have to find ways in which we can move forward on complexity despite the fact we don't all agree, and that we don't have to stop until we all have reached agreement. Otherwise, if we do that, we'll never get anywhere. And the dialogue process that I'm involved in, Pam, is a bit stimulated by that sentiment you just said. How can we move forward, even if we don't agree, in ways that will respect and indeed be designed to accept differences of opinion? I look forward very much to working with you on this. It's what I believe something that we have to get right to support Dr. Calabata in the summit. Thank you.
Kip, and then Neil?
Thank you for the floor, Barbara. You know, a lot of times people, we get in these discussions, and we tend to tune out the others that are a part of it that may have a competing food system. But one thing for certain, I mean, a lot of people will look at our food system today and says it's broken, says we need a revolution. And my comment is, is I don't think it's broken. I think it needs to continue to evolve. We need to let science in the door to make sure we're making the changes we need to make. You know, if you go back to 1920, 2 billion people were on the face of the earth, and 80% of them are living in poverty and were food insecure at some level. Today, we're at almost not-quite 8 billion, and a little bit under 10% are living in food insecurity. So we've made improvements, but we've had hiccups along the way. You know, we know that we have childhood diabetes is on the rise. We have obesity that's an issue now. So there's a number of issues that we need to deal with. Some of it's lifestyle. But I think the reality is these food systems we're talking about are complex. If you're in a small developing island in the southwest Pacific, it's much different for them than it is somewhere else. So to believe that one system can be used everywhere is a foregone conclusion. It shouldn't occur. We need to understand that it's complex, and there will be many food systems evolved from this summit. And I'm certainly glad to have Special Envoy Agnes Calabata leading the organization, and certainly look forward to working with David Nabarro at the same time, too. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Neil, and then I have a question for you, Agnes, coming from our audience.
All right, thank you, Barbara. You know, it's, as I said, exciting to be here is for Corteva, but I'm also recently appointed to be a board member, one of eight board members for the new board for the CGIR system. And that's an incredibly exciting opportunity as the CGIR becomes one CG, reforms the way we work, builds new ways of working, new ways of collaborating around the world. So in this next year, the CG will go through a tremendous transformation, and it's terrific to see this happening at the same time as the UN Food Systems Summit is coming together. I think it's a great opportunity to have that dialogue with the CG as a primary partner for a lot of what will come out of the Food Systems Summit with new initiatives to transform and further evolve our food systems. And the focus on nutrition and health, poverty reduction, gender, climate adaptation and mitigation, and finally, environmental health and biodiversity, these are the key themes we'll focus on, and I think they're fundamental to the change and evolution of our food systems.
Thank you. I think the question that's before that I'm going to introduce to the stage really comes from your group, Priscilla. It comes from the youth voices. The question is, Agnes, in terms of really all of the work that's going to take place over the next year and what you're driving towards, what are going to be the outcomes? What are the products that we'll see out of the Food Systems Summit? And, you know, what's going to be different as a result of what's going to take place?
So, thank you, Barbara, for that question and the people that are asking it, and thank you all for a very beautiful conversation. So one of the outcomes that I would be hoping for coming out of the summit is part of what Pam said, that we actually build consensus towards some form of true north. And for me, the true north is that we agree that there are certain things within our food system that we need to fix, that our food systems are not serving the purpose of where we are going, and we need to have that fixed. So that's number one, building that consensus. So that's number one. The second thing I would like to see is that we take this conversation, like I said earlier, to everybody, to make sure that decisions are made at individual level, because our food systems are impacted by those decisions every minute. So I would like, if we can conquer that, if we can be in a place where we're influencing how we think about food every day, that would be another outcome. But really, probably the most critical outcome here is when all these conversations at country level translate into commitments by countries, by businesses, by communities around what needs to change, in a way that these commitments are actually put on paper, are actually trackable, in a way that we actually agree that we are holding each other accountable for the advancement of our world. Our world cannot advance by any given community alone. It has to be advanced by all of us together. And the only way we can do that is if local solutions are brought together, and we all have visibility of what we are trying to move together. So the consensus, but also bringing it, getting to that consensus through locally-designed solutions. So that's why you have such a complex system towards the summit. That's because we have to take care of all those things. So my hope is that when we do come to action, it's anchored in all those discussions, it's anchored in that agreement.
What's so exciting about this is the momentum that it creates for the UN to convene such an incredible array of activities, to bring in the science and to bring in and focus on all the countries so they can define for themselves what these actions should be and make those investments. That momentum, starting, you know, it's been building, but starting now and building over the next year, it is going to produce some results and changes, I'm sure. So we have, we're going to move into closing remarks from you, Agnes, but any other final thoughts from anyone today? Anybody want to weigh in with a final piece of wisdom or a challenge? Priscilla, I'd love to hear from you before we close. Louise?
Once again, I think it's very important to have all these stakeholders, and like Sir Jose Andres said about coal and biomass, I think we have to talk about energy when we talk about food systems, too. And so I hope to see that going forward into the UN summit. Thank you.
Absolutely. Louise?
Great, Priscilla. And you know, we are hosting the Youth Summit and the Youth Food Institute also in Weyngdung as the first place outside the US. But what I wanted to say is, let's not assume that we know everything. Yes, we have lots of solutions, but if I take the subject, which is so prominently posed here, of waste, we know, we think we can reuse waste in a much better way, chemically. We can even use the effluents from our own toilets and so on, but still requires a lot of research on the food safety side. So we do need investments in technology, in innovation, in training, and getting the world's best minds, including Priscilla and her colleagues, to really work on this problem of food. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other last word before we turn to Agnes to close us out?
Yeah, I would love to add, 100% agree with you on the science, but we see the revolution that we've been facing on clean energy, wind, and solar. We have right now presidential candidates in America, Vice President Biden, talking about it at this Abbey Park if he becomes elected president. But we need to remember which one is the most important source of energy on planet Earth. The most important is food, because energy moves my car, gas moves my kitchens, but what moves humanity forward is food. Therefore, we need to convince governments of the world, private sector, to do more investment in the best ways to feed the planet without degradating the planet and the ecosystems where the people of the world live, especially the voiceless, especially in the poor rural communities. We must do more investment so we can produce better without putting our planet Earth at risk. So let's do more research and more science. We do need it.
Thank you, Jose. Inspiring final comments. What moves humanity forward is food. I think you have a moniker there, Agnes, going forward. Can we turn to you for some final comments?
Thank you, thank you, Barbara. Wouldn't it have been lovely to just leave it at that comment of Jose, because it's really a powerful comment? But let me just say that I want to go back to some of the comments people made. First of all, let me say thank you to all of you. All these comments are extremely powerful, and we will use it to enrich what we are doing, we'll use it to enrich, the information to enrich the process. I was struck by what Pam said about look to the world with a new eye, you know, and give every farmer a voice. This is something that we have to do, you know, given where we are going, and I really want to echo that. To be honest, I was heartbroken by what Priscilla said, because this was the only reason we are here discussing food systems today is because we need to do better for our children. We need to do better. So to say that these kids are disappointed in us, that's not where we want to be, but that's the truth. So we know, and we must recognize that we need to do better. So probably- So probably, if there was nothing you cared about in the food system, that has to be the number one thing that we all care about. And I just want to thank you, Priscilla, for bringing it out. What you said about who is feeding the world? I love that because, again, I work in Africa. 65% of the farmers we work with are women. The women spend 16 hours a day trying to feed their families, you know? So yes, women are feeding the world. Yes, smaller farmers are feeding the world. Farmers are feeding the world. We've got to take this conversation to them. We've got to understand that it's really their backs we are striving on, and we really have to do something about making it lighter, a lighter load for all of them. I want to mention something Louise said, which I can relate to very well because I've been in the policy arena for some time. Science may not be political, but it knows how to show the consequences of not taking action. The consequences of inaction will always come out through science. And I think we cannot afford to forget that. But Louise, I want to say that we may not know everything, but we know enough. We know enough to steer us forward. We know enough to move forward. So I just want to be sure that you're not being, scientists, I am one, we like being cautious. But this is not the time we get cautious. This is the time we get to move forward. So I just wanted to highlight that. And thank you for highlighting the impact of women, local food system, the role of diversity, I mean, I just, of crop diversity and making sure that these people have choices. That's really, that's something that we care about, and that's something that's similar of a special as we go into a future food system. I'm not going to call out every conversation, every point that was made, but I want to agree with you all on the importance of moving forward with clarity of vision of food system, with a true north in our food system. Again, like I said, for me, that's probably the most important thing, that we agree that we need to be moving forward. Like Kip said, food systems are diverse. They're going to be local. They're going to be every different things to different people. But we must agree on one thing. The world produces food today. If we continue, it's not going to take us in the right place. So that's why we have the Food Systems Summit. My job is to build consensus that we need to move forward. David's job is to bring the dialogue to everybody. Louise and Tim's job is to make sure that we are anchoring what is in science. And we will keep bringing all of you along. And we want to bring all of you along. Please engage. Please, you know, push back when we don't do the, we feel like it doesn't make sense what we are saying, but let's do the best for this world. Let's do the best for our youth, for our women. Thank you so much, Barbara, again, for hosting this summit. This part of the summit, of your summit. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. What a great challenge and what an amazing launch you're bringing to the world stage today in this discussion. We appreciate the commitment and really of everyone, everyone around this room, but all over, towards advancing food systems. It's going to be an exciting year. Just imagine, a year from now, we're going to be all convening and focused in New York and apparently in Rome just before that to see what really is that emerging consensus and what are those actions that are being committed to around the world. So I'm so pleased to say you can learn more about the UN Food Systems Summit on their website and also posted in Hoover. So take a look.